Welcome to the November 19th meeting of the zoning board of appeals. In accordance with governor's orders suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law. This public meeting of the Falmouth zoning board of appeals is physically closed to the public in order to avoid group congregation. There are alternative measures in place for the public to access the meeting. The meeting is being televised via FCTV as usual and real time public comment can be addressed to the zoning board of appeals utilizing the Zoom virtual meeting software for remote access. This application allows users to view the meeting and send a comment or question to the chair via the chat function. Submitted text comments will be read into the record at the appropriate points during the meeting and for those Zoom login instructions if anyone's interested. You can log on to www.falmouthmass.us/zba. From there, there's a link that you can download the Zoom virtual software and the webinar chat will be available for you. I'll introduce the board at this time. My name is TJ Hari. I'm the chair of the board. We also have Ken Foreman, who was the vice chair, Bob Dugan, who was the clerk, Ed Van Kieran, who is a full voting member, Mary Berry, who is associate member, and James Morse, who is an associate member as well. Noreen Stockman is our zoning administrator. Ashley DeMello is the recording secretary for the night. We also have with us Thomas Cox from the Falmouth IT department. We have Justin Shanahan. Welcome, Justin, who is also from the Falmouth IT department and our friends at FCTV as well. The zoning board of appeals is charged with applying the zoning bylaws for the town and we consider requests on special permits, variances, and appeals as provided in the bylaws which have been approved by town meeting and the attorney general's office for the Commonwealth. All the decisions that the board makes are made through the public hearing process. The board's goal is to hear testimony from the applicants and to the from the public and also to allow a full and fair discussion of the project prior to rendering a decision. To begin each hearing, the clerk will read the public announcement of the hearing and then present any pertinent information from the file such as correspondences to the board and referrals from various town departments. The applicant or the applicant's representative will then have 15 minutes to make a presentation and time may be extended by vote of the board. The board will then question the applicant and the public will be invited to comment as well. Public comment should only be directed at the project itself and we also please ask you to refrain from using any personal or derogatory statements. Public comment can include an opinion in favor or in opposition or it just might be a simple question about the nature of the project. All members of the public wishing to speak can utilize the Zoom virtual software using the webinar chat. We ask you to please use your full name and address for the record and we will address the questions or comments at the appropriate points during our meeting tonight. And again, the instructions for the Zoom virtual software are available at www.falmouthmass.us/zba. After public comment, the board will either close or continue the hearing. When the board is satisfied that enough information has been presented by testimony and in the file to make a decision by motion and vote of the board, the hearing will be closed and the alternative, the board may continue the hearing to a future date and time. After the hearing is closed, no more testimony may be taken. And as for board discussion and decisions, the board may then further discuss the project among ourselves and make a motion to deny or approve will be made and voted upon. The motion will include a summary of key findings and conditions. An affirmative vote of four members, which is a super majority, is required for approvals of motions on special permits, variances, and appeals. A split vote such as a three to two vote would be a failure to carry and would result in denial of project. Under Massachusetts general law, if a special permit is denied, the applicant cannot return to the board for two years unless the project is substantially different. So turning to our agenda for the night, we do have public comment. We have three continuations, two new hearings, and a few items on our open meeting agenda. So first up is public comment. This public comment period is meant for anything that is not on the agenda. So if anyone out there has anything to announce that is not on our agenda tonight, please go ahead, use your full name and address, type it into the webinar chat, and if anything pops up, I will be sure to announce it. All right, I'm not seeing anything for the time being, but again, if anything does pop up, I will be sure to make that announcement. We will go on to our continuations.
So, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to take two of the items out of order. Starting first, the first item will be the villages at Brook Hill and then followed that by application 5720, Beddingfield 606 West Falmouth Highway, and then the rest will remain the same.
I'll second it.
Very good. So the motion to take two items out of order, application 50-20 and 57-20. Motion was made by Bob and seconded by Scott and we'll do roll call vote. Let's see, Mary.
Mary Berry, aye.
Bob.
Robert Dugan, aye.
Scott.
Scott Zalinski, aye.
Ed.
Ken Foreman, aye.
Ed Van Kieran, aye.
Hurry.
James.
Miss heard you.
James Morris, aye.
Ed.
Ken Foreman, aye.
And TJ Hari, aye. And Ed chimed in again. All right, so regardless, the motion carries unanimously there. We will take first, application 50-20 Village at Brook Hill LLC 511 Brook Hill Road, West Falmouth, out of order first.
So, Mr. Chairman, the applicant has asked for a continuation. They're working on the following: a lighting plan, a landscaping plan, revision to the subdivision plan showing a sidewalk, a 21E report, revisions to allow more mature trees to remain, and also a response to peer review. The applicant is not available in January. So I would ask that we accept the continuation and continue this to February 4th.
All right, motion is made to continue it to February 4th. Is there a second?
Second.
All right, I'll give that to Ken, roll call vote, and I guess the voting members on this are myself, Ken, Bob, Ed, and Scott. So I'll go with Ken first.
Ken Foreman, in favor.
Bob.
Robert Dugan, aye.
Ed.
Ed Van Kieran, aye.
Scott.
Scott Zalinski, aye.
And TJ Hari, aye. So that application 50-20 Village at Brook Hill LLC 511 Brook Hill Road is continued to February 4th. Up next, application 57-20 Beddingfield Little in Fitzgerald, Rusty's 606 West Falmouth Highway in West Falmouth.
So, Mr. Chairman, we have a request for a withdrawal without prejudice. We received a letter from Laura Moynihan, says, Dear Board Members, I am counsel for Captain Hamlin House Condominium Trust, which is the applicant in the above referenced appeal. On behalf of Captain Hamlin House Condominium Trust, I am requesting that the above referenced application for modification of special permit be withdrawn without prejudice. So I'd make a motion to accept the withdrawal without prejudice.
Okay, so motion to withdraw application 57-20 without prejudice. Motion was made by Bob and seconded by Ed. We'll do a roll call vote once again. Bob.
Robert Dugan, aye.
Scott.
Scott Zalinski, aye.
Ed.
Ed Van Kieran, aye.
Ken.
Ken Foreman, aye.
And TJ Hari, aye. So the motion passes unanimously. Application 57-20 is withdrawn without prejudice. All right, so that does it for the motion with taking those two applications out of order. We're going to the top of the list again. We have application 52-20 Specter 15 Prospect Street in Falmouth. And is, let's see. Bernie Clower is the representative on this, so if he could be elevated, please.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the board. How are you tonight? For the record, my name is Kevin Clower. I'm an attorney with Amen Clower Law Firm here in Falmouth, and my lighting seems to be a little bit off. And I represent the applicant's Janet and Richard Specter, the owners of 15 Prospect Street. They are seeking permission to for an addition to the home which would create a second floor. Presently, they have a two bedroom dwelling, which, as we discussed at the last hearing, was non-conforming to front, rear, and front yard, side back, front yard setbacks and rear at set back as well as lot coverage by structure. They are looking to create a second floor, which will be independently supported of the first floor. This will have a minimal effect on the footprint, adding only 85 square feet. The lot coverage by structure will increase slightly from 23.0% to 24.7%, but with the issuance of a special permit, that nonconformity is eliminated. There's no increase or change to the nonconforming front yard or side yard setbacks. The bedrooms will increase to three, but as is noted in a referral from the health department, this has a three bedroom Title V system. Following our last meeting, we submitted the information that the board requested, including a confirmation by Scott McGann that the vent may be moved without any issuance as to the existing Title V variance, and also a plan depicting parking and staging areas available on the site, confirming that all the vehicles and materials can be kept out of the road. I did receive a copy of the correspondence that was submitted today by a nearby neighbor, Mr. McCarty, objecting to cars on the street and saying that the applicants are the cause of the cars near this corner. As before, I've discussed this with my clients, they again reiterated to me that they don't park on the street, they park only in their driveway, which accommodates four cars. There are some nearby houses that rent out on a regular basis. Those do generate more cars and parking and do sometimes park in the street, but that's not caused by the fault of the applicants. This is a house that it's for two people, which is, and in their own words, two older people who, again, their words not nearly as popular as Mr. McCarty might seem to think they are. They have two adult children who do visit on occasion, but even then, their parking is contained in the driveway. As we discussed the last hearing, this project represents a significant improvement over the existing conditions and is a much more useful space for the applicants. It meets the standards of 243C, 24069E, and 240-216. Believe that we answer the questions the board had at the last hearing. I'd be happy to address any questions that might come up now and otherwise, that is it.
Thank you, Attorney Clower. And I should mention that the voting members on this application are myself, Ken Foreman, Bob Dugan, Ed Van Kieran, and Scott Zalinski. And if any members of the public have any question, comment, or concern regarding this project, you can type it into the webinar chat using your full name and address and we will get to it shortly. As for board questions, Bob, do you have anything?
I have no questions. I looked over the information that Mr. Clower supplied and it seems to satisfy. I just want to make sure that everyone did get to see the letter from Mr. McCarty and Mr. Clower did respond to it. But there was thing, a mention at the bottom of the letter that just said, perhaps the applicant plans to accommodate no more than four parking spots available in the driveway and discontinued street parking. In that case, perhaps you should specify that in approving the application, you make arrangements so that it's a four parking space limit on the property. But again, that was just a comment from his letter, so I don't have any further questions.
All right, thank you, Bob. Scott? Sure. Ed, anything?
No comment right now.
Ken.
As I recall, the last discussion, there was, we were talking a little bit about construction, having all the construction vehicles on the property. Is there provision for that? Am I remembering that right?
So we did submit a plan showing where vehicles, materials could be staged. The builder did respond, telling us that it's a great layout for the construction with ample room for materials and parking.
Okay.
So there was a plan submitted, there was a plan submitted to the file, just so everyone knows that the builder sent, and it shows that they would reserve parking area where the driveway is, also on the other corner of the lot, which is not near the septic system. It shows that the septic system and the field that are on site would be fenced in and demarcated so you wouldn't have any parking since it's not an H20 tank, and it showed that there is room beyond the driveway to fit in a construction dumpster.
Okay, so Bob, I'm not missing anything because I don't see it under the plans under review by ZBA, the scans. It might not have made it on to that.
Ashley's just gonna check on that. I think it was scanned in, but I'm not sure where.
I'd be happy to share my screen if the board would like.
I wouldn't mind seeing it if you have it.
No. So this is the plan that was submitted, which shows the existing driveway area here. There is a portion of the front lawn, which is not part of the septic. We do show an area for the dumpster to the left of the house. We show the septic and field being fenced in and also an area that's available for parking materials on the western side of the lot as well.
Right, so that the fenced in, obviously, that's off limits.
Yes.
Okay, perfect.
And the builder felt that was more than adequate for what they would need.
All right, thank you.
Chairman, I do have a couple small ones.
Go ahead, Scott.
Attorney Clower, what do you figure the project time would be?
If I may, I'd like to bring in, we have Greg Sturuni and Tim Santos as participants as well. Greg is the architect of record and Tim is the engineer.
All right, looks like we have Mr. Santos there.
I think Mr. Sturuni is coming in and.
Greg Sturuni is here.
Greg, could you speak to what the timing of the project would be, assuming we were to receive?
Yeah, I haven't specifically discussed that with the builder, but I would say a project like this, I know he's gonna go quickly because, you know, we're opening up the first floor and we're not really renovating the first floor. So he's gonna need to get this up fairly quickly. I would anticipate at a minimum of three months, possibly four months of construction.
And that'll be through the winter months?
Yes, yeah, they're planning to, once this is, we granted approval, we need to finalize construction permit drawing, some file for a permit, and once they have that, I know they want to start.
So you don't foresee any issues during the winter months with climate weather and snow?
No, I think if you look at that plan, they purposely put the dimensions off the property from the street to the property line. We didn't take that for parking, thinking that, you know, we do need areas that will be snowbanks and so forth, but you can see that there's ample room around the property to deal with, you know, snow removal if they need to.
The reason I, the only reason I asked that during the timeframe was because when it does snow and they do plow, then you create windrows of snow that they don't totally get out. It would just make that road even narrower, that's all.
Yeah, again, I think if you look at that dimension of the plan, I mean, if the builder has to, I'm sure he's gonna have manpower there. If he has to move some snow, he can. Again, I, if you.
And where does that go?
Evan, is the plan still up?
I can share it, hold on.
If you see the, with the front of the property, there's a dimension at 10 foot six, and on the side of the property, there's also a dimension at 10 foot six. That's from the actual edge of the road to that staking. I didn't dedicate any of that to parking, thinking that we needed to leave some maneuvering space on the property. And again, there's ample room to, if that road, for whatever reason, gets narrowed up with snow, there's no reason.
And while you have that up on the screen, it shows, it shows the radius of the road coming in. Is that the lot line or the road layout where?
That's the road layout.
The corner of the fence will be out in the road layout?
No, no, fence, no, the fence is in red. Yeah, the fence right there, that's right on the corner.
Okay.
Property line, you can see actually goes into the road.
Oh, yeah, that's okay. All right, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, gentlemen.
All right, and my concerns were addressed through Scott and Ken. Does anyone on the board have any follow-up questions?
Nope.
All right, not seeing any. And I'm not.
Happy to, well, I was gonna make a motion to close, I guess if there's no public comment of any.
I'm just looking in the webinar chat, there's no public comment, so I think we can go ahead and do that if you want to make.
Okay, I'll make that motion that we close the hearing.
Very good, and I think I heard Ed seconded, so motion to close made by Ken and seconded by Ed. Roll call vote once again. Bob.
Robert Dugan, aye.
Scott.
Scott Zalinski, aye.
Ed.
Ed Van Kieran, aye.
Ken.
Ken Foreman, aye.
And TJ Hari, aye. So the hearing is closed. Did we want to make a motion or did we want to have any quick discussion about the project?
So I'd make a motion to approve with conditions.
I'll second it.
Very good. Motion made to approve with conditions made by Bob and seconded by Ken. Bob, do you want to start us off with findings?
Yeah, so 240-3C, 240-69E, 240-216, not substantially more detrimental. They're doing a second floor addition. The current nonconformities, front yard setback is 19 feet, where 25 is required, and the rear yard is 3.9, where 10 is required. Current lot coverage by structures is 23%, where 20% is allowed and up to 25 by special permit. The property has a concrete block foundation that could not support a second floor, so an independent support columns will be added to the front and rear to support the second floor, which will be cantilevered over the existing first floor. Septic, the septic system field has been demarcated and they plan to fence the area of the septic to protect it from any vehicle travel or materials since it's not an H20 system. There were comments from butters regarding issues with people parking in the street. There are no parking signs posted, and the applicant has made testimony that they are not the ones that are parking in the street. Plan was also submitted showing management of parking in for materials during construction, including a dumpster. It was also stated that the work will be done during the winter months, it will take approximately three to four months. There was also a lot comparison chart submitted, but this is in the mid-range. Previous meeting mentioned the issue with a septic vent pipe and the health inspector weighed in and said that that's easily relocated without any issues.
All right, conditions?
Well, per plans, and then also per the parking material management plan labeled construction parking and loading areas, septic field must be demarcated and fenced in. No parking will be allowed on the street. All parking and materials must be on this subject property. Where it's a tight street and they've had issues down there, I don't know if you want to put in that, the construction hours we usually do.
I think that might be, that might be good, though.
May probably also want a condition, I know a condition, nothing, no parking in the street, but that also needs to follow with the property itself.
Right. Just going back to findings and just thinking about that parking situation, should we add that testimony had that they intend on doing the work during the off-season not to affect the traffic in the summer months?
Yeah, yeah, we should add that in there.
All right, anything else for either findings or conditions?
Do you want to list the ridge height there stating it will be 25 feet?
If we could, Mary.
And also, we should probably add the condition we've been doing with the assessors department, that they view the property on completion to update their records.
And we also need the comment from engineering about not directing stormwater off the premises and that they will need to provide dry wells or other stormwater mitigation to be approved by town engineering.
Yeah, so I would add all of the engineering. Yeah, so I would add all of the engineering comments, because we also have to add that section ninety-nine one.
Post address.
Post address.
And then for the second floor office, because they are limited to three bedrooms, you would want to limit that that office not be converted to a bedroom.
Correct, we should also put in the findings that the septic on this site was through a variance from the health department, so the property is actually limited to three bedrooms.
Does that office have a cased opening? I, I forget.
It doesn't actually have a door, it's an open to the, to the stairway area.
So we just put cased opening to remain.
It's not a cased opening, it's just, it's kind of open to the landing, it's, it's pretty, it's more than a four-foot cased opening. It's, it's kind of a flowing room.
All right. Anything else for either findings or conditions? All right, seeing none, I think we have all we need, the motion to approve with findings was made by Bob and seconded by Ken. Roll call vote, Bob.
Robert Dugan, I.
Scott.
Scott Zalinski, I.
Ed.
Ed Van Kuren, I.
Ken.
Ken Foreman, I.
And TJ Hurry, I, so the project passes unanimously with conditions. Attorney Clower, thank you to you and your team tonight.
Thank you all very much, we appreciate your time, have a great night and happy Thanksgiving.
Happy Thanksgiving to you too. All right, up next, we have the continuation of thirty-six dash twenty, Wings Pond LLC, sixty-three North Falmouth Highway in North Falmouth, it's a comprehensive permit to construct six duplex buildings. Totalling twelve units, three of which will be affordable. The members that, the voting members on this are myself, Ken Foreman, Bob Dugan, Ed Van Kuren, and Scott Zalinski. And for the applicant, we have Mr. Nick Maroni. You're on mute, Mr. Maroni.
Okay, good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Lot has gone on since the last meeting, we're, not everything is complete yet, but we're hoping tonight to narrow the issues down. We had submitted the twenty-one E. I'm sure you both had time to review that, there's we, we still have one more waiver request that needs to be submitted according to the peer review engineer for section twenty-two forty, twenty-six C. I'm working on that, now, we had submitted a couple of other waiver requests. We made our request for advisory review so that we could start the process for filing for the permit for the demolition of the building that's already been demolished. As far as comments regarding the landscaping goes, we've decided to wait until we've resolved all the engineering issues before we do a revised landscape plan, so we don't just keep revising it with other issues that aren't resolved. We have some disagreements with the peer review engineer regarding some jurisdictional issues on the wetlands lines that in the, the Ashley Land subjects are flooding in the vernal pool that we're trying to work out between our consultant and the peer review consultant, and we have a few stormwater issue issues to work out the same way between the, our consulting engineer and the peer review engineer. There's some details that have been submitted that I haven't made their way onto the plan yet, and they will in the next provisions that I guess the purpose tonight, I guess we're trying to narrow the issues down so that we can wrap it up at one more meeting, we hope. With that, I'll turn it back over to the board with the questions and see if we can narrow this down.
Very good, thank you, Mr. Maroni, and once again, if there are any members of the public wishing to make any comment, question, or concern, go ahead and type that into the webinar chat using your full name and address, and we will address it shortly.
So for the board, we have Brian Hugation present tonight, and he is the board's peer engineer review for this project. I know you've probably had a chance to review his report, but I would like to give him an opportunity to address you and maybe summarize his findings and perhaps open points.
That'd be great, thank you, Noreen. Mr. Hugation, welcome. Nope, and you're on mute.
Thank you, good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, staff, applicant. Yes, thank you, so we have received some revised documentation provided by the applicant's representatives. We've, we've seen some revised site plans, list of waivers, partial, partial responses in writing from Walter Hermanow, engineer for the project, and overall, the revisions were pretty minor in nature. I just walk you through them briefly, made some very minor changes to the configuration of the soil absorption system, the septic system. And added some parking, moved one of the parking spaces over, and then just a lot of documentation. I can run through, I'd like to run through some of the comments, which I feel are the more important ones, which kind of remain outstanding. Mr. Marioni mentioned that we still, we feel that an additional waiver should be requested from section twenty-six C because number of units, so that should be added to the, to the plan, and all the requested waivers should be shown on the plan. There was no emergency vehicle access plan that was provided, and that's something which we feel should be shown and, and documentation from the fire department, that the, there's a proper turnaround area for the fire department apparatus. So we feel that that should be, that should be provided. The applicant has shown a dumpster on the plans, but there were no details provided, just a rectangle saying dumpster, but, you know, the dumpster should be properly screened, and the details for that should be shown on the plans as well, whether it's gonna be fencing, combination of fencing, landscaping, et cetera. We did mention, Mr. Marioni did mention that they're requesting a variance from the landscape plan or that it, it might be forthcoming, but, you know, obviously, that's a, that's an outstanding concern. Especially where, you know, a good, a good portion of this lot is gonna be cleared. It is within jurisdictional areas to a certified vernal pool, so the clearing of trees, mature trees there is definitely an outstanding concern. Onto some of the more technical matters. There is runoff draining onto the site from off-site areas. The, the applicant's engineer has provided a, an explanation for why his analysis did not include all of those areas, and while I agree with it, I agree with his reasoning that the actual runoff may decrease as he, if he were to include that additional area, because the time of concentration would increase. But the issue for me is that, yes, the runoff would decrease, but it's gonna decrease in the existing conditions before development as well as after development. So if you're, if you have to keep the post-development runoff at or below that of the pre-development condition, a reduced runoff actually makes it harder to comply with that. The stormwater management standards refer, refer the user to the hydrology handbook for conservation commissioners.
Can you elevate Walter Hermanow and Frank and Mark Mangiello?
And so the the Massachusetts Stormwater Management Standards refer the user to the hydrology handbook for conservation commissioners, which clearly state that the analysis should include all areas that are draining onto the locust property, and it shouldn't be limited solely to the legal boundaries of the site. I, I don't, you know, I don't necessarily think that, you know, the system might be undersized, but I don't know. You know, we need to see the calculations to confirm that, so I think that should be, that should be submitted as well. Hello, Nick. Some additional details were provided in calculations for a stone plunge pool. And that detail is appropriate, it should just be added to the plans. There were a lot of other things too, which, you know, might be done correctly, but they need to be on the plans because somebody's gonna pick this thing up and, and build from it, and it needs to be a complete set of plans, it's, it's the same standard that everyone else is held to, and, and it should be, it should be held here as well. A few other concerns with the erosion controls, there are a pair of catch basins on the road which should be provided with some inlet protection, some silt sacks, they're down gradient of the project site, that's a very easy item to comply with. The test pits were performed both for the purpose of drainage and for, and for the septic system for this project, but and the test pits, you know, are, they're appropriate, they were done correctly, and I don't disagree with any of the material or information that's on them, except for the fact that there's a discrepancy between the elevation, the surface elevation that's listed on various sheets, it's inconsistent, sheet five and sheet six, and so that should just be cleaned up, it's a little, it's a little bit confusing. The, you know, although the, the location of the leaching field does meet Title V, you know, given the fact that we have a very sensitive environmental receptor downstream, it would make more sense from, you know, protection of the resource if the, if the location of the reserve areas in the primary leaching field were swapped, but it, it does, the location does in fact meet Title V. That's, those are the, that's the essence of my comments, I, I did review, just briefly looked at the the phase one report that was supplied, and it looks like there are no, no reportable releases or threats of releases. It, I also noted, it wasn't clear if the report meets the ASTM standards. I don't know that they were required to meet that either, so just pointing that out. That's it.
Thank you, Mr. Hugation. We'll turn it to board questions, if, if anyone has any questions, just address it to either Mr. Hugation or Mr. Maroni and his team. We can start off with Bob, have any questions?
I guess, just one question regarding fill, so it seems like there's a very large amount of fill that's planned to be brought into this site. How, how does that generally affect that area, bringing that much fill in?
And is that to Mr. Hugation?
It's Hugation, yeah.
So any fill that's present will have to be removed for construction of the leaching field, both, both for the septic system as well as for the drainage areas infiltration systems. All that material needs to come out, and the applicant is showing a five-foot overdig for the septic system. And that needs to extend all the way down to natural materials.
Would there need to be any protection put in for that, so if you look in the plan, it shows that there's a, an asphalt driveway that leads to a property and back, and that's at the steep hillside? So is there anything, any kind of protection that should be put in there regarding erosion issues so that it won't affect that entrance to that property?
I, I need to look at, I'm not, I don't recall the, the area that you're talking about, but I mean, in generally speaking, yes, I mean, there should be perimeter erosion controls around the perimeter of the site at the limit of work, as well as like in the catch basins that are in North Falmouth Highway, down grading of the site.
That's all I have for now.
Thank you, Bob. Scott, any questions?
Yeah. Yes, for Mr. Hugation. There was some conversation when we did our site visit that, I, I think maybe Bob was, was referencing first part, first question. The way when we walked it, it kind of worked out that the way the elevations were gonna be and the amount of fill that were gonna, that was gonna come in, if you visualized it, you would have boxed the, the footings right on the grade that's existing, and then the foundations would have been backfilled up around that, I think that that's what we discussed. I think that's what Mr. Dugan was speaking about, the, and how that reflects on the installation of the septic system going into virgin ground after you take out your unsuitables. Not to put words in his mouth, but I think that's what he was talking about. My question is, were you provided with Mr. Marioni's letter requesting the variances, did you get a chance to read that, Mr. Hugation?
I did, I saw a list of five or six, I believe, yes.
There's one, there's, there's one dated November twelfth, and it's, we are requesting a waiver from the Falmouth Wetlands Protection Bylaw, chapter two thirty-five in Falmouth Regulation FWR-ten. The rationale for this request is outlined in the attached letter from Mark Mangiello of LEC and Environmental Consultants, dated November twelfth. "The denial of this waiver would render this project uneconomical as it would result in a loss of four to six units." My, my question to you, in your professional opinion, if we grant this waiver, what are the environmental consequences by granting this waiver in your professional opinion?
Sure, so the waiver that's being requested, if granted, would not exempt them from compliance with the, with the Massachusetts Wetlands Protection Act, which, so it really only addresses those supplemental requirements that the town may have which would supersede the Wetlands Protection Act, or in, in addition to the requirements of the Wetlands Protection Act. I think the Wetlands Protection Act does provide adequate protections. And, and I think there's a, a lot of concerns, you know, with that. I, I don't know where the applicant is in that process with the commission. But I think they're gonna have a lot of concerns with the development as, as proposed. The, the Conservation Commission, I would think, would have some, a lot of concerns with the current development as proposed. Primarily because, you know, there's, there's grading, there's buildings proposed within a hundred feet of a certified vernal pool and, and as well as the, as the watering vegetative wetland, so I, I think there are significant concerns there. I don't know if that.
So the higher, the higher you raise the lot, the, the easier it is for water to run towards that in, in layman's terms, right?
That's correct.
Well, some of the information that you have requested that hasn't been provided yet, that Mr. Marioni is working on with the setbacks, the calculation setbacks around the buffer zone and all of that, will that help you determining, in your personal opinion, your professional opinion, suitability for that waiver?
No, it wouldn't, it, it's more, it's more in the interest of verifying that, that the proper setbacks were there from a Title V standpoint. It, it appears that they might have the, meet the required setbacks, but it's, without them seeing the dimension on the plan, it's, I can't make that statement. But no, those, those would not help me render a, a decision on that.
All right. Uh, that's all for now, Mr. Chairman. Thank you very much, Mr. Higashi. Nice to meet you.
Same here.
Thank you, Scott. Uh, Ed, any questions?
Yeah, Mr. Maroni, uh, there's a, I counted about fifteen items that needed to be corrected in this letter here. Do you agree with all of those?
We, we have some items we'd like to discuss with, uh, Mr. Higashi still about the, um, stormwater and the buffer zones. I think, I, I think we meet the requirements of the turnaround that, that are in the, um, in your subdivision rules and regulations. I'm, I'm, I'm not exactly sure what he's talking about. We need to go to the fire department with that. We certainly will, but uh, could I ask for Mark Manganello to be elevated so that he can address the, um, the environmental, not the environmental, but the, uh, the issues of the buffer zones and the vernal pool?
Sure, that can be done, but, uh, Mr. Maroni, I just want to get through board questions first and then, you know, if your team has any rebuttals or want to point out anything, uh, that Mr.
Clarification. Yes, sir. Thank you.
No, I'm just trying to keep things orderly with the amount of people that we have. Uh, Ed, anything else?
No, it's all, you know.
All right. Thank you, Ed. Uh, Ken, anything?
Well, again, I guess my questions, probably some of these have been addressed when you, uh, this is, uh, from Mr. You get, you're, I'm going to mispronounce your name. You're.
That's, uh, you're gay.
Um. But I'm trying to understand the distinction between the, uh, Massachusetts wetland requirements that you feel they might be running afoul of and the, uh, municipal conservation commission regulations. So if, and maybe I'm just being thick here, but if you could try to re-explain that.
Sure. Ken, uh, to be honest with you, I am, I have not reviewed this project for its conformance with the town's wetland protection bylaw. So I, I really can't offer you any, um, any opinion on that.
Okay. What about with respect to Massachusetts?
Sure. Um, I mean, a vernal pool requires a hundred foot no disturb zone around it. Um, and you know, obviously there, there are structures within the hundred foot buffer to the vernal pool. Uh, there's grading there. Um, you know, there's clearing of trees.
So you would, would you then say that they are in violation of the Massachusetts regulations?
If, if it were built, um, as currently designed, yes, I would say it doesn't comply.
Okay. That's a clear statement. Thank you.
Anything else, Ken?
Uh, I think that's it for now for me.
All right. And, um, my comments have already been addressed by board members. Uh, Mary, do you have anything?
I don't at this time, but I do have some follow-ups to that at some future time.
Sure. Thank you, Mary.
Will we, TJ, will we have, um, a consultant at future meetings when we're talking about this again?
I, I would assume we would. Mr. Higashi, will you be available? Have future dates?
Absolutely.
Thank you. Then, then I will, I will hold off on some follow-up having to do with the Massachusetts wetlands requirements.
Very good. Thank you, Mary. And, uh, James, anything?
TJ, can I, can I follow up with it? Right?
Sure. Go, go ahead. Sorry. My, my internet's a little choppy. Go, go ahead, Ken.
It's my slow thought process. Um, the one thought that I had looking at the plan, uh, that, where they might be able to address this setback encroachment would be if they swap the position of the road and the, and the, uh, first couple of units. And I don't know if you've looked at that at all.
I haven't, I have not, I didn't consider that when looking at it, but I have the plans in front of me, so I can certainly take a look at that as well.
And then the only other, I, you know, I agree with the concerns you expressed about the uh, adequate turnaround for emergency vehicles and, and, uh, just wondering what other guidance you might have on that.
Sure. So the simplest thing here to do would just be to, you know, there's a lot of different software or that you can use to evaluate the turning movements of the, of the local fire truck. Um, you know, every town, every fire department has different requirements. Some towns want you to evaluate their ladder truck. Uh, some fire departments will, will give you their turning templates. Uh, but it doesn't have to be done that way. It could be done using, you know, the acetate eight and a half by eleven turning templates superimposed on the plan. But just need to, if you just show that it, you know, it can, um, make those maneuvers, then I, I wouldn't have any concerns with it. Or, uh, you know, alternatively, if, if the fire department would just say, yeah, we've looked at it and it, it meets, we're good with it. And then I wouldn't have any concerns there either.
Right. I mean.
But I just haven't, haven't seen any, anything to, you know, either one of those to, to, to say, yeah, it's, it's fine.
I mean, as with many of these projects, I guess this is considered a driveway. Cause it, it exceeds the length of our, uh, dead end road, allowable dead end road under the subdivision regulation. So. Uh, but of course that doesn't change the, the need for, for a safe access for emergency vehicles. So.
Sure. I mean, you're right. Exactly. I mean, you know, site plans, whether it's just a commercial site or whether it's a, a subdivision, um, yeah, the fire department needs to get in either way. So.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ken. James, anything?
Uh, my questions, uh, concerns that have already been expressed. Thank you.
Very good. Um, then once again, if there's any question, comments or concerns regarding this project, uh, you can type it into the webinar chat using your full name and address. Not seeing anything right now.
Can I have one more, please?
Sure. Go ahead, Scott.
All right, sir. Brian, um, I, I didn't see any comment or a, a, any review of the entrance and the site, uh, the view restrictions. Did you, uh, what is your opinion on that?
Uh, specifically with respect to, um, site distance, you mean?
The pole and the box being so close to the layout, uh, headed back towards Falmouth coming out of that. Do you have an opinion on that?
I, um, I did not, I did not note anything on that. The one comment that I previously had with respect to the driveway was that North Falmouth Highway is a state road. So it will require an access permit from the state, uh, once all local approvals have been obtained. And, um, I'm sorry, I, I'm.
Determination they, they want.
Did address that as well, but they did widen it to meet the standard of, uh, of Mastod. Um, I did not, I did not note the proximity of the pole to the, um, to the driveway, however. But I can certainly take a look at that.
I guess, I guess then I have one more to, for Mr. Marioni, if that's okay, Mr. Chairman.
Redhead, Scott.
So, Mr. Marioni, you got, uh, widen the entrance. How did you widen the entrance in relation to the, um, the pole and that, that, uh, that box on that pole that we had concerns about on our site visit? How? Did you get closer to the pole with the layout or did you move? How did you, how did you widen that? Cause I know we were pretty close to it.
We had to widen it two feet, Mr. Zuninski. I think we went a foot each way. I think we were twenty-two and we had to go to twenty-four.
So you went a foot closer to the pole without doing it about the pole? Thank you.
That's my recollection, yes. And also just to, to, to add to that, we, we are working on trying to get them to raise that box or move it to a different pole. We recognize the, uh, the issue there.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Scott. Uh, any, any follow-up questions from the board?
No, just some, uh, one thing for Mr. Marioni, again, on the pole, um, can they represent the pole somewhere on these plans? Cause it always seems to be missing. They represent the concrete bounds?
Uh, yes, yes, we will. Well, I'll make sure we add it to the next plan.
Thank you.
All right. Anything else? Uh, any other follow-up questions from the board? All right. Uh, Mr. Marioni, I don't know if you yourself or if any members of your team want to address any, that, Mr. Higashi?
Please, I would like to also elevate Walter Hermano and then I'd like Mark Manganello to address the, uh, vernal pool and, uh, where we stand with our, with the Conservation Commission.
All right. Mr. Manganello?
Good evening. Um, I submitted a letter to the board, which I think was referenced earlier tonight that, um, was in support of the waiver request from the Wetlands Protection Bylaw. And I just wanted to clarify a couple of jurisdictional issues that have been referenced tonight. Um, incorrectly, I believe. And, and just make sure that, uh, the board and everyone involved here is clear about these jurisdictional issues because they are, um, they're important. And I understand the concern about the vernal pool. And it's important for everyone to understand what the jurisdictional issues are under the local bylaw and what they are under the state Wetlands Protection Act. So the local bylaw, Falmouth Wetlands Protection Bylaw, uh, does have a one hundred foot buffer zone to vernal pools. It does have a one hundred foot buffer zone to isolated vegetated wetlands. And it has specific performance standards for that buffer zone. So the request for waiver that was submitted states correctly that if the performance standards were applied to the project under the local bylaw, it would affect the development. Because as has been stated, a portion of the development is within a hundred feet of the vernal pool. And the local regulations would affect the amount of work that's permissible within that hundred foot buffer zone. The Wetlands Protection Act is different and this is a unique, um, nuance of the Wetlands Protection Act that I don't think is widely known. But it is, it's, it's just, it's in the law, the Wetlands Protection Act. So isolated vegetated wetlands are not protected under the Wetlands Protection Act, period. They are protected if they are isolated land subject to flooding. That is a resource area that can be associated with, uh, isolated wetlands. And we do have isolated land subject to flooding associated with this isolated wetland. That's shown on the plans. That's been approved recently as a boundary by the Conservation Commission. So that is a state resource area associated with this project. However, there is no one hundred foot buffer zone associated with land subject to flooding under the state regulations. So that the limits of jurisdiction associated with this wetland are that I L S F boundary. Vernal pools specifically are not protected as a resource area. Vernal pool habitat is protected under the Wetlands Protection Act. And it does extend one hundred feet from the vernal pool, but only if that one hundred foot area is within another resource area. So in this case, the only other resource area is I L S F, the isolated land subject to flooding. And that's the extent of vernal pool habitat that's protectable under the Wetlands Protection Act. So that probably made everyone's head spin a little bit, but, um, essentially the result of it is that there's no Conservation Commission jurisdiction over the project with the local regulations waived. The limit of conservation jurisdiction under the Wetlands Protection Act is the I L S F boundary, which is down the hill. I think, you know, maybe twenty or thirty feet from the edge of the wetland.
Chairman, may I ask Mr. Manganello a, a question?
Go ahead, Scott.
Uh, good evening, Mr. Manganello.
Evening.
We walked the site. Do you believe that there were any violations that had occurred prior to the application? I mean, there was extensive excavation and filling there. In your expert opinion, do you believe that, that any, any violations occurred prior to that in, in, with regard to distances to that vernal pool?
Like historical disturbances?
Like, like what we saw. Like if we took a tape measure and saw where they had filled and cleared up towards that vernal pool that aren't on the plan, that, that are existing conditions that are obviously, uh, man-made and created after.
Yeah, I, I definitely, we definitely noted there was, uh, man-made disturbances in the vicinity of the vernal pool, but putting a, putting a date on that and yes, and trying to understand the.
Uh, it's just a simple question. Was it prior to this application? I just want to get it on the record that obviously there's been some disturbance prior to this application, right?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Scott. Um, any board questions for Mr. Manganello?
I just want to be sure that I have the right letter here. So this is November 12th. You submitted this?
Yes, that's the one. Um, there's two paragraphs in there. There's, there's one.
I'm combing through it.
Yeah, there's one paragraph that's specific to the bylaw and there's one paragraph that's specific to the Wetlands Protection Act. And um, I hope I've, I've summarized those two paragraphs precisely.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Ken. Uh, Mr. Manganello, I, I know that, uh, Mr. Higashi said technically everything falls under title five, uh, just fine, but what, what would you say about swi- switching the reserve in the, in the primary there that, that he mentioned earlier? Would, would that have any benefit?
Uh, I'm not sure I understand the question. Could you, could you repeat that?
Sure. So I, I think Mr. Higashi said that under the title five regulations, everything seems that it, it would pass just fine. But I believe he had a comment about, uh, the primary area in the, in the reserve area. If, if those two were to be basically flip-flopped.
Oh, does that, would that result in moving the primary area further away from the wetland? Is that
right?
The idea?
I think so.
Yeah, I, I, I would have to look at that a little bit more closely and understand the groundwater dynamics here that are at play. Um, kind of a complicated question in my mind. I mean, typically further away is better. You know, as a rule of thumb, but if it meets title five as is, and there's a presumption that it protects resource areas.
Okay.
TJ, can I?
Go ahead, Ken.
I'm, I'm just wondering with respect to these assertions uh, regarding the wetlands regulations, whether, uh, Mr. Manganello, uh, i- if, if knows of any case law? Uh, where, where they've been litigated?
Uh, you know, I, I could probably find some examples if, if the board is questioning it. I think, um, I know B S C group has some wetland scientists on staff, so you know, they might be able to review this and offer an opinion on it. You know, I've, I've heard of these, um, situations that it's, again, I said, this is a nuance and it's, it's, you know, there have been situations where there's been a vernal pool and because of this nuance, they were able to build a parking lot in a circle around a vernal pool. It's just a, it's a, it's, it's pretty well established for people who are wetland scientists, practicing wetland scientists. Um, and it's one of the reasons that some towns decided they wanted to have bylaws.
Yeah. Well, I'm, I'm just, uh, like I said, I, it's pretty important to this particular project, how this um, is substantiated. So you know, I'm just looking for some more legal guidance.
Yeah. I, I mean, I think if Brian agrees to have someone, um, at B S C look at it, that's probably the easiest way to do it. I can provide, you know, I can photocopy pages from the Wetlands Protection Act regulations that support what I'm saying if necessary, but.
Well, that's at a minimum, but you know, there's regulations and then there's what the courts say about them.
Well, that's if there's a gray area. The, the, these are fairly explicit regulations.
That's my view. I'd like to see some more, some more beef there.
I agree with you, Ken. And Mr. Manganello, I think you said this doesn't fall under the jurisdiction of Falmouth Concom? It, it would be the mass regulations.
Just under the Wetlands Protection. Just under the Wetlands Protection Act regulations. That's correct.
Right, okay. Um, so I know this, like you said, this is a fairly nuanced issue, and since this board's the ZBA and not Falmouth Conservation Commissioner, it's not something that we deal with too often. So I, I'd say the more the more you have to back up your claim, the better. Uh, any other questions from the board?
Yeah, so I've, I've got one question for Mr. Marioni, um, in a comment that Ken had made earlier. Why didn't you consider flipping it so the roadway is on the left and the housing is on the right?
Well, I'm sorry, do we, this is the same thing we covered in the site law? Where, where we were talking about moving the
The roadway on the left?
Reserve area?
Yeah.
I did bring it up when we were on the site, yes.
Yeah. So please ask the question again, Mr. Duran.
So, so why didn't you look at considering flipping the plan so the housing would be on the right side, the roadway would be on the left?
Well, we, we did look at that, but we thought it would be better. We, we did several preliminary sketches on this. We thought it would be better to have the houses further away from the houses on the, on the, on the right.
So where, so, so, so on the right-hand side, it doesn't seem like you're very close to any housing.
Well, there were two, but I, I could finish the, the answer. It was the building we have to bring in and the elevation. The retaining walls we would have to build on that side were much more expensive, putting it on the right side, the houses on the right side, and the road on the left side. We looked at several different options, and this is the one we think is the best. And going back to a comment that was made earlier, also about moving the, swapping the leaching field primary with the reserve. Um, that question's been asked and answered before. It's just the retaining walls we would have to put to put the reserve system, but the main system where the reserve is now is just cost prohibitive.
So do you have anything to submit showing that that's cost prohibitive? I, I only ask Mr. Marioni because we hear these, we hear these statements a lot on many projects. We always hear that we looked at this plan and we decided it didn't work, or this would be cost prohibitive, but we never actually see anything that shows why it's cost prohibitive. Or, or, and we're not there when you're doing the process. I mean, one of my concerns with the units closer to the vernal pool is once the project is completed, I mean, when you have housing on that side, you know, people tend to, you know, start expanding. They start expanding their yard space there, you know, into the areas that they shouldn't be. And it's, it's, it's difficult to, you know, rope something like that in. And it, it's a large parcel. And, you know, you've been involved in other projects, and I, I'm just kind of surprised that that this is the layout that you thought was the best layout. If you looked at many different styles and plans and you know, moving stuff from one side to the other gets you around a lot of issues with the wetlands in general. The, the, the response that, you know, we're looking at it, that you'd be closer to the properties. You know, if you move the properties to the right, you're now closer to the buildings on the right. You know, those are all large acreage parcels. The one that's in back, you don't even see it even from their driveway. When you walk up the driveway, it's so far onto the parcel. So, you know, that reasoning just doesn't kind of fly with me. It could be something else. But saying that, you know, you're now too close to somebody that's next door. And quite honestly, we haven't heard anything from, I guess it's kind of unusual, but we haven't had any response from any of Butter. This is the first prop, project that I've ever been involved with on a 40B, where we've never even gotten a response from in a Butter, which is just, it's just kind of odd. So maybe it's because they're so far away from it, they don't really take a look at it, but you know, you may want to take another look at a layout or see if there's some changes that you can do or some some tweaking to the plan because it's, I mean, it's, it's an undisturbed parcel, except for the, you know, the damages and the prop, the problems that were done before. I, I just think that this almost looks like something was just designed and put on a parcel versus something being designed specifically for a parcel. That this is the layout we want, how do we fit it all in? You know, maybe if we get a better idea of what your thought processes are, you said you went over two or three different plans and they didn't work out, or you know, if you're going to make a statement that, you know, flipping something or doing a change is cost prohibitive in very weight, you know, it may be cost prohibitive. But if you're going to state that, then, you know, just show us something that shows why it's cost prohibitive.
Just to do, I appreciate your comments, but we're, we're $50,000 into the engineering and it's six or eight months into the process right now. And we, I think we're going to stay the course on this at this point. I appreciate your concerns, but we, we think it's uh, this is our best design and our best course. Hope to, uh, hear what you think when the time comes.
Mr. Chairman, may I?
Sure, uh, just a second, Scott. Um, but Mr. Maroni, if, could you produce anything at all showing that it would be too cost prohibitive to essentially flip the, flip the plans like that?
You know, no. What, I don't, what do you ask me to produce? You want me to give you an example of which one of those?
I mean, I, I, I guess, so I mean, all, all we have is your statement saying that if, essentially if you flip the plans, that's too cost prohibitive. Uh, without any sort of documentation showing why, I, I don't understand why just simply flipping the plans, it would be too cost prohibitive.
And, and I don't understand why you guys can't vote on what we submit rather than try to redesign a project.
Because we have concerns about the encroachment on the wetland. That's why. And the question is, if, if you were to redesign it and reduce the encroachment, why would that make this uneconomic?
Wha- what do you, what do you think the cost would be if that septic system went into failure and you had to do the, the retaining walls after the project was done? That would be more than doing it in the beginning.
I don't think that would happen. I think if the septic system failed, we'd dig it out and replace it where it is.
That's not how it's designed. It's designed to have a relief area.
Mr. Hermano, you weigh in on that, please.
If I may, uh, good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Walter Hermano, PE for the record, for the applicant. Getting back to one the consideration of the roadway nearest the vernal pool instead of the septic system, if that was to be flipped. I, I recalled during our site walkthrough that Frank Breivon explained that to uh, one of the do remember him explaining that that area was considered, but it was considered to be at a greater risk of potential hazard to the vernal pool because of automobile traffic being that close to the vernal pool. And the likelihood of an accident happening would have been catastrophic compared to a septic system that is controlled and monitored and regulated. To the answer to the other question regarding the septic system, typically the actual area being used, utilized is replaced uh, in kind, in, in same location. The reserve area can be used, and it is requirement of Title V to provide that for new construction. Uh, but I have found in, in, in my practice and experiences, typically the actual primary area will be the area that gets replaced with a new system.
So in the event that that, that system fails, that whole subdivision goes on hold until, in, in, in situations, it's been my experience, and I have a little bit of it in, in the field, but they use that like a mini, like a mini sewage treatment plant, correct? That's what that is. It's a septic system for the whole subdivision, right?
It is a septic system for the
So as a system slows down and goes into failure, it's been my experience that what they do is they go into the reserve area, build that while they recognize that that system's in failure, so it doesn't shut down the entire septic, the entire subdivision from their septic system use. Now, tell me if you think I'm wrong, but th- that's what's been done traditionally, and it's been my experience that that's why it's set up like that in those situations. Now, I may be wrong, but
Well, no, you're not wrong, Mr. Zelinski. That is one approach. I find all too often, in many instances, uh, the owners of the subdivisions tend to, uh, when they're using a shared system, tend to wait till it's in failure before they actually have to replace it.
I thought you said they were monitoring agents. Uh, you, you were going to monitor this system and it was wouldn't you know prior to it going into absolute failure? Wouldn't you know about it?
It can be monitored. I believe system of this size will have annual inspection requirement. There are inspection ports uh, to be provided on top of the septic system to have access directly into each leaching chamber.
Thank you.
Yeah, actually, uh, it does have to be monitored because it's a pump system.
So then would know if it was starting to go into failure prior to it going into absolute failure, correct?
Yes, you should know that.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Scott. And uh, how many years is that system designed to, to work for, Mr. Hermano?
It doesn't exactly work that way. Uh, the system lifespan, there is no exact years that they can be designed for. It's based on use, care, abuse, uh, chemicals, fats, greases, how often tanks are pumped. Uh, but on average, yeah, if you have a system that's properly maintained and in an area like this where you have uh, excellent percolation rates through the soils, I would expect a system to last at least 20 years.
All right, and, and that's based upon your professional experience?
Yes.
Question, follow-up question related?
Go ahead, Ken.
Uh, just wondering if the, because in a with the group here in the sub, in the, you know, complex, how, how will the maintenance schedule be established? Who's responsible for that? How does that all work? Is that set in the condo docks or something like that?
It, it will be in the condo docks, and it will, there's also be a replacement reserve for that system that estimates its useful life of 20 years.
Thanks.
Because in 20 years, that would be the responsibility of the, the homeowners, basically the homeowners association, right?
Yes.
Not the developer, he'd be long gone by then.
Right.
All right. Uh, any other questions from the board? Mary?
Yeah, on the topic of the Wetlands Protection Act, for the next meeting, would it be possible for, for the board to ask a request that somebody in the town? I'm assuming there are people in the town that know all about that, that they could come and discuss it more robustly?
Thank you, Mary. Um, Noreen, would that be a possibility, or are we?
Sure. So perhaps you'd like to have the uh, conservation administrator attend to discuss it?
If she could. Uh, is this project going before conservation at all? Or since it's not their jurisdiction, do, do they have to apply for anything?
Before them, um, with a request to amend an order approving the wetland boundaries. So we, we uh, wanted to correct some, some issues with the wetland boundaries. Those were approved by the Conservation Commission. We're still waiting on the actual document. But that, that's the last we were before them.
And what exactly was that application?
It was a request to amend the ORAD. The O, ORAD uh, being an acronym for Order of Resource Area Delineation.
Okay.
I wonder if town council also might
What would town council be doing? Just out of curiosity?
Oh, these are, are law, bylaws, law, they're state regulations. I don't know what their reading of those is.
Uh, any other questions from the board?
Yeah, so I just have a quick question, Ms. Marioni, on actually the layout of the units. On the second floor, what is that doorway into unfinished space? What is that unfinished space?
Home office.
So will there be heat? So I guess my question is, will that unfinished space meet the designation as a bedroom?
No, there will be no door on it. It'll be a minimum four-foot case opening.
Okay, so on the, because on the plans, you're showing doors. So the doors won't be on them?
There's one, one bedroom on the first floor and one on the second floor, correct?
So on the three-bedroom units, there's two bedrooms on the second floor, and there's another doorway that goes into a very large unfinished space.
Oh, okay.
On the two-bedroom
Talking about the two-bedroom.
On the two-bedroom units, there's a doorway going into, there's actually two doorways going into large unfinished space. So my question is, since we're basing all these on a shared septic system, I want to make sure that none of those spaces meet any kind of designation that they could be, ever be used as a bedroom. So if you're saying they may be finished and they may have heat and they have headroom, in most cases, those are going to meet the definition, which would probably put you over the criteria of your shared system.
Well, we'll make sure that, uh, I'll take a look at that before the next meeting, make sure that those uh, do not meet the criteria for bedrooms, because they're not intended to be bedrooms.
All right, Mary?
What is the intent?
Uh, that question for me, Mary?
Yeah, well, I think she asked, what, what was the intent of that space if it's not a bedroom?
A space for people, if it's big enough to be used as a home office or a, an exercise room or a sewing room, you know, however people choose to use that space. Not a designated room like a bedroom or a dining room or anything like that. It's a just space that would be used.
So the, so the, so the layout that you have, call it unfinished space, but it seems that it's finished space?
It's, it's, could be finished if they wanted to use, but not as a bedroom. There's, remember there's condo docks and all this too, and the condominium association would have to
No, I, I, I understand that, but it, it, it comes back to the same thing when we, when we have to look at some of these plans and things that are missing or things that are mislabeled. We look at a space on a plan, a large space, and it's specifically labeled, this is unfinished area. And then during a meeting, we're getting testimony that it's planned as a bonus room, could be an office, could be exercise space, could be other room. That's not how we look at them on the plan. So if that is your intent, correct the plans, show that this is finished space, not unfinished space, and then more details on them because we need to know that, especially again, we're dealing with shared septic systems, and it's just important that we have all the information on the plans, and we haven't had a lot of time to go over the plans, so maybe have all that information for the next, for the next meeting.
All right. Um, thank you, Bob. Any other questions from the board? All right, I think uh, expectations for next meeting, we have um, Mr. Irrigation, thank you for your time tonight and addressing the board, but I think there is um, there's some outstanding items that uh, you'll discuss with Mr. Maroni and his team. All right, um, the, the items that Mr. Irrigation pointed out, and was there anything else? And I'll just let board members chime in.
Um, Mr. Chairman, di- did you want me to, to have one of our professional wetland scientists render an opinion on the letter that was submitted uh, relative to the um, the request for the waiver?
I would like that. Uh, Ken gave a thumbs up, so I'll say that was an answer in the affirmative. Uh, everyone else seems to be in favor? Yes? All right.
The more information, the better.
Because we're not Concom.
And I'm not a professional wetland scientist.
And I'm not a professional wetland scientist.
Right. All right, any, anything else for next meeting? Members of the board, anything at all? Anything that I'm missing?
No, were there any site distance issues with the entrance? Or could we get some answers regarding any issues with site distance?
And it was 600 feet, if I remember right, in each direction.
Goes to the, it goes to the pole. Which obstructs. There was testimony, Bob, that they had to go through the state to get the permit anyway. So they would bring that up as well, wouldn't they?
I hope so. I mean, I think, I think the pole's going to be an issue either way you look at it, because if you're pulling out of that lot with the poles to the left, remember that next entrance is in easement, and it's not too far from there. And you have basically the use of that easement currently is three separate properties. You've got the new construction that's happening next door, which again, I know Mr. Hugation brought up the idea of these, of drainage and water draining onto property. Property to the left is currently under construction. They're redoing that whole hillside. I don't know what effect that's going to have anything. And then you've got the property in back that uses that entrance, and then you are going to have this development also use that easement entrance until at any point that they decide not to. So I think you're going to have a site issue on that side.
Wasn't there testimony that they weren't going to give up their rights to use that easement?
Yeah, and they, and they don't have to. So if they choose to at some point, that's fine, but we're going to have to go on, on the fact that there are three separate properties all using that easement. If this one is developed, it's going to have all these units on it. You've got the new home that's being built, and the one in the back seems to be a multifamily, so there's a lot of, there's a lot of traffic that would be going in and out of that section. So that's something that I'd like some more information on to be addressed.
That's permissible with Mass DOT, Mr. Maroni?
I'm not sure what the question was. Is she using the easement or access to the highway?
I would say.
I think you have site distance issues with that, where that easement entrance is for anyone. I just think there's going to be a site distance issue on that side. So you might as well figure out how they're going to handle the pole now, and how they're going to correct it, so you can get in and out of that site safely without some kind of obstruction. And it's not like you have a entrance next door that's being used by, you know, one home. It's going to be used by one home, a multifamily, and this complex.
Or the proposed entrance to the property that can be in that close proximity to that easement? It's a matter of feet, right?
It appears when you're there. That's why I would like some more details on actually that, that portion, the inside, the outside. I don't know if we get any of that from Mass DOT either, but whoever can supply us with some information on that.
So, excuse me, just to clarify, the concern is the location of our proposed permanent entrance to the project, our driveway, in its relationship to the easement that will be used after the project is built, that accesses the other two houses.
Yes, and in addition to the sight line being affected by the pole where it's presently located.
Okay, okay.
Right, Bob?
Bob, is it mute?
Yes, correct.
Yeah, all right, okay. All right, thank you. All right, anything else before we continue?
You do still need the information on the demo permit.
Thank you for the reminder, Noreen.
Yeah, and more, you know, again, that's still outstanding as the turnaround.
Yes. So, Noreen, was it the comment on the demo permit, is that to me or to the chair? I'm sorry.
No, that would be to you. The board's still looking for, we need confirmation that you filed for the demo permit with the building department.
Well, I, I can't really file for the demo permit until I get the advisory review letter back from the town clerk. That's the first step to the process. And it clearly says you cannot file for demolition. No, it doesn't say it. So you, the building inspector cannot issue a demolition permit until he has that advisory review letter, opinion back from the town clerk. I've asked town clerk for it twice over the past two or three months, and have not received the letter back yet.
Yeah, all right, well, I'm sure they've been going through an election, but I think the other part of the issue here is that there was a demolition on the site prior to approval to do that, so I think that's contention upon you to get that information.
Mr. Maroni, your audio kind of dipped out there. Could you repeat that, please?
I can't hear the audio.
I'm sorry, Mr. Maroni, is, it's not just me?
No, I can't hear it either.
No, it's hearing, no.
We can hear you now.
Okay, thank you. Can anyone else hear me?
I think we can hear you now.
No, I, so I made the request.
It, sorry, it just dipped out again. We heard you bright and clear a second ago.
I'm muted again. How's that?
Loud and clear right now.
Okay, I made a request for the clerk for driver review, which is the first step in the process. After I get the letter back from the clerk, then I can file with the building inspector, the application all filled out. Just waiting for that letter. Requested again in, requested in September, and again in October. So if someone can light a fire under the clerk, I'd be happy to put this thing to rest.
All right, well, like Noreen said, I know he's been busy with the presidential election and all, but if you could follow up with him, hopefully we can have that for the next meeting. All right.
And actually, also just for the file, because he's, he has requested, if he could also just submit copies of the request, so we have him for the file.
Noreen has copies of them.
All right. If that takes care of our expectations for the next meeting, Noreen, what's our next available date?
So I looked at it kind of in advance, so January 7th would be the next possible.
All right.
So I'd make a motion to continue to January 7th of 2021.
All right, would anyone like to second that motion?
I got it.
All right, motion to continue this hearing until January 7th, 2021, made by Bob, seconded by Ed. Roll call vote, Ed?
Ed, thank you, and I.
Bob?
Robert Dugan, I.
Ken?
Ken Forman, I.
Scott?
Scott Zelinski, I.
TJ, hurry, I. All right, Mr. Hugation, Mr. Maroni, and your team, thank you for all your time tonight.
Thank you, and have a nice Thanksgiving.
Have a good night, everyone.
Thank you, Mr. J. Thank you, boy.
Thank you, Mr. Hugation. Mr. Chairman, could we take a, maybe a five minutes?
Sure. All right, so we will take a quick five-minute break. We will pick everything up soon.
You're back and we are on to our new hearings for the night. We have application fifty-six dash twenty, Collinvo, trustee twenty, Brooks Road in Woods Hole.
So, application number fifty-six dash twenty, being all persons deemed affected by the Board of Appeals under section eleven of chapter forty-eight of the Mass General Laws. You are hereby notified that Roger Collinvo, trustee of Washington DC, has applied to the zoning Board of Appeals for a special permit pursuant to sections two forty-three and two forty-sixty-nine E of the Code of Falmouth to remove existing decks and construct a screen porch and rinse station, increasing lot coverage by structures on subject property known as twenty Brooks Road, Woods Hole, Mass. For referrals. Engineering, this application was reviewed for impacts to public rights of way and public utilities. Brooks Road and Clap Road are a public right of way in this area. No alterations are proposed to the right of way. Any change within the right of way would require filing a permit with the engineering division. Any connections or alterations to public utilities would require permission from the appropriate town department. The project must not direct any stormwater runoff to public property butters or public rights of way. We recommend that the board add a condition that requires the addition of dry wells, rain garden, or stormwater infiltration measures. Regarding that item, Laura Monahan Council did talk to them and they does show in the plan that they do have dry wells connected. And five, the plan shows that there are portions of the existing stone retaining wall located within the public right of way of Clap Road. We defer to the planning board and select board if a license is required for occupation of a town right of way by these structures, or if these structures should be removed from the right of way. Planning board, no comment. Conservation doesn't have any comments. The project appears to be located outside of their jurisdiction. Fire department has no issues with the project is drawn. Assessors Department, no comment. Water Department, no comment. From the Health Department, Health weighed in today. Just before the meeting at four forty-two and said that a new septic would be required and that, and they would not sign on the building permit. That's all we have for referrals right now.
All right, thank you, Bob. And the voting members on this application will be the regular voting members. If any member of the public has any question, comment, or concern regarding this project, you can go ahead and type them into the webinar chat using your full name and address, and we will address it shortly.
Mr. Chairman, also, I'm sorry, just to note, there were also three letters of support and one letter with no objections.
Very good, thank you, Bob. And for the applicant tonight, we have Attorney Monahan.
Hi, good evening, everybody. I'd like to ask, if I could, that Brian Foley join us. He is the architect from Jill Newbauer and Associates, if possible, just in the event the board has some questions.
Hello.
There he is. All right, I have a quick PowerPoint I'd like to share with you, if I could, for the project. So, this is an application under two forty-three and two forty-sixty-nine E. The site is non-conforming as to lot coverage and there's a slight non-conforming setback by about a half a foot to Brooks, Brooks Road for the dwelling. This is the location of the property in Woods Hole. It's highlighted in yellow. It's in a well-developed neighborhood. I supplied a lot coverage analysis showing that there are other properties in the neighborhood over twenty percent. It is a mixed neighborhood of, you know, many properties that are in, in that sixteen, eighteen, twenty, twenty-five percent range. This is a photograph of the dwelling in question at twenty Brooks Road and another photograph showing the garage area. The site plan you have in your file, so essentially the work that's subject to the permit is in this area here on the dwelling. And the applicant would like to remove some exterior decks and construct a screened-in porch and then add an exterior deck to the screened-in porch. So, the existing conditions are showing a house, a garage, and a shed. The lot size is about eleven thousand square feet, zone residential C. The existing lot coverage is twenty-three point nine eight percent. The existing lot coverage by structures, pavement, and parking is twenty-eight point four four percent, so well under the forty percent allowed for overall lot coverage. So, as I said, they are planning on adding a first-floor screen porch in place of the decks on the first and second floors with an attached shower enclosure. They'll be removing a storage area and adding a rinse station at the ground level. There'll be a slight increase in lot coverage due to the screen porch being larger than the existing decks. The second floor deck and shed will be removed. The first floor deck will be added with access from the screen porch. Proposed lot coverage would be twenty-four point eight nine percent by structures and twenty-nine point three five by structures, pavement, and parking. So, we'd have an increase in lot coverage by a hundred square feet. So, very slight increase from twenty-three point nine eight to twenty-four point eight nine percent by structure. These are the elevations that are in your file. The floor plans are there as well, so these are the existing elevations showing that these deck structures, again, existing elevations, this is a walkout property with the basement level walkout. You've got showing the decks here and the cross-section. Again, more elevations. Here we have the proposed project with the screened-in porch, again, basement level walkout. Another view of that. So, under section two forty-sixty-nine E, lot coverage by structures over twenty percent to twenty-five percent by special permit, as you know, the twenty percent lot coverage for the lot equals twenty-two hundred, twenty-two, one, zero, point four square feet by right. So, we're about five hundred and forty square feet over that by right allowance. The size and the height of the structures is in keeping with the neighborhood. You have letters of support or no objection from some of the neighbors and one being the immediate abutter at sixteen Brooks Road, which is the abutter to the south. No adverse traffic impacts. The lot coverage is characteristic of the neighborhood and I've supplied that analysis. And that is the PowerPoint presentation. Got some other photographs here just of other properties in the neighborhood. Seventeen Brooks Road, eleven Brooks Road, sixteen Brooks Road, Mast Road, these are all provided in the lot coverage analysis that I gave you. Gardner Road, Buzzards Bay Avenue, so Agassi Road, Twisted Avenue, Thirty-seven High Street, Twenty-three High Street. So, these are all just showing you that, that this structure and what's being proposed is not uncharacteristic of the neighborhood. So, that is my presentation. I'd be happy to answer any questions and Brian is here to answer any architectural or floor plan questions as well. I should mention that. As, as far as the Health Department comments go, I did see that at four forty-two PM. I spoke with Brian about it. It appears that what Mr. McGann is referencing is the office on the second floor. And he says in his comments that the office appears to look like a bedroom, a Title V bedroom. So, it is a four-bedroom house. It's a four-bedroom septic system. There's no intention to create a fifth bedroom. If you look at the second floor plan, you'll see that that office has an opening, a door opening that is now proposed at five feet, two inches. And it has a stairwell opening that actually leaves it open to the floor below. So, it really doesn't have a privacy factor, in my opinion, to be a Title V bedroom. But I didn't have a chance to talk to Mr. McGann about it. Certainly, the, the door could be widened to six feet if Scott felt that was an issue. But I guess my suggestion might be that if the board is inclined to approve this project, that they simply condition the permit to say that the property would meet the requirements of the health agent for a four-bedroom septic system. You know, as I said, there's no intention to create a fifth bedroom here and the applicant certainly does not want to be putting in a new septic system. So, whatever modifications might be needed for that office, you know, we would review that with Mr. McGann at the building permit stage. And I think the board can condition that appropriately to, to keep it a four-bedroom home, is my point. So, with that, I think the project does meet the standards of two forty-three, two forty-sixty-nine E, and two forty-two sixteen of the zoning bylaw. And we would appreciate your consideration of it and be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Attorney Monahan. And once again, if anyone out there has a question, comment, or concern regarding this project, type it into the webinar chat using your full name and address and we will address it shortly. As for board questions, Mary, any questions?
I don't have any questions at this time.
Thank you, Mary. Ken?
Come back to me because I'm still assimilating.
No problem. Ed?
No, no, Bob, no questions.
Hey, Scott?
Yeah, I guess during reading Scott McGann's statement where he says he wouldn't sign the, the permit, is that in, if it was a five-bedroom or he would, it needs a new septic? Either way, if this permit gets approved, it needs a new septic, period. How does that read?
I think what he's saying is that it's, the existing home is a four-bedroom home. That's confirmed by the assessor's records. And what he's saying, I think, in looking at the plans is that it appeared to him that the office looked like a fifth bedroom. So, if this project was going to building permit stage for five bedrooms, that a new septic system would be required because it exceeds the capacity of the existing, which is four bedrooms. But it doesn't, it doesn't make any sense that a new four-bedroom system would be required. I, I don't believe that's what he's saying. He's, he's just looking at this office and saying, I think that's a fifth bedroom, therefore, a new system would be required. And I guess what I'm saying is that that's not the intention. We, we don't believe it's a fifth bedroom. We think if further modifications are needed to that doorway to widen it up, we could do that, but we just haven't had an opportunity to speak to him about it, so.
Yeah, okay, I understand, I understand where you're coming from. I just, the way I read it, it sounded like he was requesting a new septic system, period.
Yeah, I.
Read it and I just wanted some clarification on it.
I, I don't know why, I mean, I, I can't see on what grounds there would be a request for a new septic system. The septic system is working fine. Mike Bissingeri was out to look at it. You know, he can pass it under Title V, so there's no issue from our perspective on the operation of the existing system. And, and if there's no increase in bedrooms, then like many, many, many other applications you have, there's no requirement for a new septic system.
And there's no other tie-ins, Attorney Monahan, right? It's not, that septic system isn't tied into that garage at all?
No. Not that we're aware of, no.
Not that you're aware of?
No, I, I, I don't, there's no plumbing in the garage, correct, Brian? So, there wouldn't be, there wouldn't be any reason for a tie-in there.
That's correct. It's, the garage is not tied into the septic system.
Okay, thank you, thank you, Ms. Chairman.
Thank you, Scott. Bob, any questions?
So, so is the spare room on the plan, is that what they are calling would be an extra bedroom? Is that what he's looking at, the one that's labeled spare room? And what about the one that labels workshop?
Second floor office is what he's calling the bedrooms. The A-one-oh-two, it's a large office, the spiral stair from the family room goes up into it and then it, it passes through a five-foot case opening into a hallway that goes to the bedrooms.
So, the one, so the one to the right of that that's labeled spare room, is that, is that counted as one of the bedrooms?
Yes.
And that's one of the four?
Correct.
And then he didn't have any, well, you probably don't know because he answered so late, but he didn't have any issue with the workshop room downstairs?
It didn't appear that he did. It, it looks like in his note that he was looking at the office because he says specifically something to the effect, office would be number five.
Okay. That, that's all I have.
Thank you, Bob. So, an ad issue would be, would it be the, would it be the door that's shown next to the bathroom that's part of the office?
Possibly, you know, it, it, I mean, I, I'm not sure if he picked up on the fact that it was open to the floor below with that stairway.
Right, and that's a spiral staircase, right?
Right, so it, it really, you know, like I said, if, if modifications, slight modifications are needed on that doorway, that could be done. But in order to get a building permit for these plans, we have to meet the requirements of the health agent. So, we have to try and work that out with the health agent. And if there're going to be minor modifications to these floor plans to maintain the existing septic system, we would have to meet those requirements of the health agent and could, of course, file a revised, you know, floor plan with the zoning board. But there is certainly no intention to replace the, the, the existing septic system. So, whatever needs to be done there to keep it at four bedrooms, we will work with the health agent to do that.
Sure, and I'm just trying to understand the plans. Given the, the health agent's concerns, those, that dotted line in the office next to the closet, that's a, that's a five-foot case opening there?
That's correct, five foot, two inches.
And then, and then you have that doorway that I said that's next to the bathroom into the hallway of, of the other.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah. So, right, it may be that's, but again, we never had an opportunity to talk to him about the open stairway, so.
Understood. All right, and, and I'm just trying to get an understanding of the plans, too. So, if the health agent has hung up on that, just say hypothetically, if he's hung up on that door there, could that be a case to opening as well? Is there a possibility to?
Just to clarify, the door from hall to the bedroom hall?
Correct, that's what I'm, that's what I'm looking at.
That is certainly a possibility, yes.
Okay, all right. Just trying to understand if you can.
Absolutely.
Just trying to understand what revisions could be made if, if that's what the health agent's concerns are.
Yeah, that, that would be preferable to a new septic, yes.
Right.
Yeah, thank you for that, yeah.
Definitely cheaper, right? And the, the plans also show that the shed would be removed?
That's correct.
And I see the applications for a rinse station, but the plans itself say shower.
Well, there's a, there is a rent station, an outdoor rent station. The shower is attached to the building. The shower is attached to the building and there, and all there is, isn't it, is an enclosure around the shower that's actually up above the ground. So there's really both there.
Oh, okay. Sure, I I just remember similar applications, there's usually an issue. And it's getting awfully technical, but shower versus rent station, I think the preferred language is rent station these days for whatever reason.
We'll call it a rent station, yeah.
But there seems, yeah, this 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 seems to be an issue, if you have a rent station, you do not have to go into the septic system. If it's called a shower, they have to put it into the septic system.
Okay, there you go, Bob's more knowledgeable than I.
Um, there there is, there there is a note on the previous permit, it was from the following health agent in and I don't know if Scott reviewed this either, but they were, they were concerned back then because they didn't even know with what's on the site, if there's room to really replace the system.
Uh, we did have the septic located uh just recently. Um, it's on the most recently submitted site plan. That's as far as I can answer that question, but it is located.
Yeah, I'm just going over the previous permit, and they questioned the health agent at that time questioned the soils in that area because they're very variable, and their main concern back then was would there be enough room if you did need to replace the system? So I don't know if that's has anything to do, and and it is unfortunate, I know the referrals did go out early, earlier, we just did not get anything back till today, quarter to five, so. Kind of buying your hands when you get something in so late.
That and that was the reasoning for my question, because that that property runs straight through that glacier till area through Woods Hole. And all of those systems are always strip-outs. And they're huge and disruptive, that's why I asked, that's all. And I and and I still can't, I still don't understand his statement about a new sess- a a new system and I and they wouldn't sign off on it, I don't, I don't know what that means. They're calling the office the fourth bedroom.
The fifth bedroom.
No, the fourth. Office is number four, it says. Laura?
I thought it said five, Noreen.
I don't see where the five bedrooms would be, I only count three plus.
I know, I'm just, I'm reading the.
Well, there's one in the basement as well. So there's, there's one added in the basement, that that's where he's getting the five from. Yeah, it's unfortunate that we don't.
Do we have the basement plan?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, because it says existing four-bedroom, and in quotation marks, it says office is number four, proposed five. Office is much more of a bedroom, plus the addition of the lower-level bedroom.
Right.
That's how I'm reading it.
Right, that right, that's on sheet A, A one hundred, showing the bedroom. A bedroom basically being relocated down to the lower level. So there's three bedrooms on the upper levels. And then there's a a modification on the floor plan to put a bedroom in on the lower level, and then the office would be if the office was a bedroom, that would be five.
Yeah, there there's, there's four existing bedrooms, the three upstairs and the one on the lower level, that's, that has been there. We're just moving a door over, it's the same exact opening size. Um, and then the office has also always been there, we're not doing any work there. My interpretation of the message is that he's reinterpreting the office as a fifth bedroom. We're not changing any of the bedroom counts in our proposed plan.
Right, and and as I said, I think if you are inclined to grant the approval, if you condition it that the project has to meet the requirements of the health agent before issuance of a building permit, then if we can't meet that, we have to come back to you.
I and and I, and again, I just, it just came in, and I wanted to be clear, and it, I I don't understand the way it was phrased. Um, and I'm sure we'll have time to get clarification on exactly how that was, uh, I only assume that, Mr. Chairman, right?
Absolutely, uh, Attorney Moynihan, uh Jill, is Jill Newbauer part of your team?
Um, well, Brian Foley uh works with Jill Newbauer.
Yeah, okay, yeah, that's right. I'm the project manager, and uh, yes, I work under her.
She said in the chat that she had just sent photos to you of the office space that may be helpful.
Oh, yeah, sure, if I could share some photos, that is certainly doable.
Sure, and and the property owner himself said that um, he's available to clarify any issues that we may have.
Great. All right, just a moment, I'll, I'll share the uh photos I have. Go. That good, can you see?
We can.
All right, so I'm gonna go back. So there you can see the railing around the staircase. Um, it's currently used as an office, there's the railing again. And you can just see, I wish I had a better photo of the case opening itself, but you can just see the outline uh to the left and then the upper part of the photograph here, it goes to the hallway. And I'm just going to see if Jill sent additional photographs. Yeah, they're the same photos I have, so this is what we have.
Okay.
I'll go back to that main photo, so clearly an office. All right, should I stop sharing now?
Sure, I think we've, we've seen it, thank you.
Okay, thanks.
All right, uh, any follow-up questions from the board?
Well, I think we should hear from the owner as well, he volunteered to, you know, chime in, I'd like to hear what he is.
Sure, um, if he, if he's capable of being elevated, we can find out.
Let's see, hello?
Hi, we have you.
Hello?
Hello.
Uh, well, greetings and and hello, board. Um, it's nice to be listening in, hello, Laura, thank you for your work on this, and hi, Brian. Yeah, so I'm Roger Collinville, owner of Twenty Brooks Road, and I've been listening into the conversation, so. Um, I I'm happy to answer any questions or clarify anything, so, I mean, right now, we just it's really a three, it's three bedrooms, so there's, on the second floor, there are three bedrooms. And we're not actually changing anything to the second floor except renovating the master bathroom. Um, so we're, we're certainly not adding any bedroom or have any intent to add a bedroom. Um, and in the lower level, um, it's never been used as a bedroom, it's just a a a space that we're, we're changing the configuration of, so it's, it's currently a library, and it's gonna remain a library. We're just um adding some paneling to the ceiling, and and that's pretty much it, and then adding the shower outside. So there's, there's nothing here, yeah, there's just, there's, it's, it's uh currently used as a three-bedroom house, um, not even as a four-bedroom house, so that's I guess I'm happy to a- answer, answer any questions you might have about, about the house or the project.
All right, thank you.
EJ?
Yep.
So, but you do show a fourth bedroom now in the basement on the plan, at least. Um, I I think that I guess I have one other question, which is, have you had any issues with your septic system? Is it functioning fine and?
Um, never.
How long has it been in place and all that good stuff?
Um, I don't know how long it's been in place, uh, I mean, I know we got it cleaned out within the last three or four, four or five years, it's hard to tell, the years go by, um, but no, we haven't had any, any issue with the septic system. Um, it's working fine.
Does anybody know what it is? Is it a, is it cesspools, is it a Title V system, nobody even knows how old it is?
No, as I said, Mike Bissinari had gone out to look at it, it has a leaching field. So I'm presuming it is a Title V system. Um, you know, he, if necessary.
Some record of it in, at Town Hall then, right?
There should be, yes, um, you know, if if the board feels it's necessary, we can submit a Title V inspection report. Um, you know, Mike has represented to Brian Foley that it will pass inspection. So uh, we had him do that recently because we anticipated that the board would be inquiring about the septic system. So we had him take a look at it. So as far as we know, there are no issues with it.
Given the health agent's, you know, referral, I would say that's something that you ought to get.
Okay.
Mary, do you have something?
Uh, just something to add, I I was just looking at the decision of the Falmouth Zoning Board of Appeals fourteen dash oh three. And part of it was a condition, this is for this property, I should said that. That number two, the septic system shall meet Title V or the requirements of the health agent. So it was in this prior one.
Thank you for pointing that out.
I'm assuming it has to be a Title V, or they wouldn't have said that.
Thank you, Mary. All right, uh, any other follow-up questions from the board? Okay, and I'm getting the feeling, do do we need confirmation from?
I think we need to continue this, I think we need to continue this to get clarification from Board of Health and and the septic system uh you know, information.
Well, I, you know, with all due respect, I mean, this has been in the office now for many, many weeks, and the property, it is a hardship, I think, to the for the property owner to have to wait any longer when the permit can be easily conditioned to address this. If there's a problem that the health agent has and the plans have to be modified to the extent that it's more than opening door casings, then we would have to come back to you and mod- for a modification, but we don't anticipate that's gonna be the case. I mean, these kinds of, you know, moving door frames come up all the time. Um, we've got, you know, Thanksgiving coming up, so I don't know, I just think in fairness to the property owner, to have this sprung on us at quarter to five without any opportunity to do anything, and then have to have a continuance because of it, I I just don't think that's really fair, you know, so.
Can I, can I ask Bob to reread the referral from the health agent?
So it's a couple of good, different comments, one of it is that a new septic would be required, we would not sign on the building permit. There is another reference, like you said, about a an office, but it says existing four-bedroom, office is number four. But then it says proposed five, office is much more of a bedroom, plus the addition of the lower-level bedroom. I mean, there's definitely I assume he looked at it late because we got it late, and we usually don't get things this late. My only concern with it is that I wish he had looked at it earlier because the the last permit they had referenced concerns regarding the septic system. But I can understand.
I think we need clarification on that, I just think we can't vote this tonight.
Well, he, if I may, he says in his, in his email, and I'll read it verbatim, from Scott to Ashley at four thirty-four P M. Existing four-bedroom, office is number four, okay? Proposed five, plus the addition of the lower-level bedroom. So I think he's saying the lower-level bedroom is proposed bedroom number five. And he has in brackets, the office is much more of a bedroom. So he, he's focusing on the office as of, as a fifth bedroom. You know, we feel pretty confident that we can talk to him and show him the plans and have the plans tweaked if at all possible to um assure him that that doesn't meet the definition of a Title V bedroom. It clearly doesn't.
When, when he agrees to that, then I'm prepared to vote.
Well, it's just unfortunate, you know, that when was this filed?
Attorney Moynihan, I I understand your concern, but, you know, the health agent has been busy with the pandemic and all.
No, I I understand that, I understand that, but the question was posed to him though um, Wednesday at four fifty-six. So it's not the health agent's referral, it's, he was asked a question late yesterday, only late yesterday. Um, but, you know, everybody's busy, I understand. So if if the board feels that a continuance is necessary, I don't feel it is. I think you can condition the permit appropriately to say that the septic system has to meet the requirements of the health agent for a four-bedroom project, period, that's it.
Well, I just think there's, as as Scott pointed out, some ambiguity as to what he meant. In that if we have a fifth bedroom, it's not acceptable? Or did he mean that there's an issue with the actual functioning of the septic system for some reason?
But how would he, there there's no evidence of that.
You know what, I I don't know, Laura, it's just, all I know is, we, all we have to go on is what we get in the referrals.
Okay, did he file um a referral, a formal referral, do you have a formal referral from the health department?
Isn't that what Robert just read?
No, that was a question that was asked of the health agent at four fifty-six on Wednesday from a board member. A board member had made an inquiry about the plans. So she emailed him with a question, so I guess I'm asking, what does his referral say? No comment?
Nope, so actually, he did not submit a referral, so. Let me check, let me see. So on nine thirty, uh, September thirtieth, um, he did send referral over, and at that point said health doesn't have any issues with the project.
Okay, so then in the email chain, today at four forty-one, Noreen asked him, are they proposing a five-bedroom septic or is four okay with what they have proposed? Then he says a new septic would be required, we would not sign on the building permit. So, I mean, I think it's pretty clear from that, he's looking at this office as a fifth bedroom. And that's why I'm saying, we can work through this with him with an appropriate condition. But
I think the board will still like further clarification from the health agent. And just to put your client at ease, especially with the holidays coming up and all that, I'm not hearing any other opposition to the project, I I think it's just that we need that clarification from the health agent.
Okay.
Does the board know how long this this would take? Is this, because I, I mean, I I know this, this hearing has been out for a couple of months, and um and we are, I I just don't know, is there a, I don't know enough about the internal process of the board, is this?
No, no, no worries, Mr. Collinville.
So Noreen, since this is a single answer.
We just have to check in with the health agent regarding this issue.
Our next meeting is December third. Seems like we ought to be able to get, it's a simple question.
Right.
Noreen, would it be possible, and I assuming that Attorney Moynihan can make contact with the health agent, is it possible to put this on the next agenda?
Sure, I think it'll be quick.
So a- and again, I'd just like to say for the record that on September thirtieth, if we felt there was any issues or problems with the septic system when that referral came out, we would have reviewed this in advance, because obviously now the applicant isn't gonna be another couple of weeks behind, um.
As we have, we would have done the same thing and got the answer to the question prior to this, I think we're both in the same situation. If you could definitively say one way or the other, you 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 have an a- an educated assumption of what you think he said, as do I. So, I mean, without definitive, I I I personally have to know exactly what he was talking about.
Well, and 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 maybe this is just an aside, in fairness, that if these questions are coming out in this age of Zoom and not being able to, you know, get this information, it'd be helpful to copy the applicant if there is this question, I could have followed up with him today. the applicant if there is this question. I could have followed up with him today. I could have called him, you know, the question came out Wednesday and I could have had the information for you, but I didn't even know the question was out there. So that, that would be helpful, you know, if these last minute questions are coming up, that the applicant be copied or somehow advised so that the applicant could chase the information down. But anyway, with that, I, I think we, we understand, you know, where you're coming from and would request the continuance to December third.
Because Laura, it might have been helpful if there had been a copy of the existing plan. We, it would have answered some of our questions in the permit. If there was some kind of question, but.
Well, generally, if you've got a four bedroom house with a four bedroom septic system and you're not increasing the, the bedrooms, you know, we, we don't, we don't address the septic system at all because there's no increase. And particularly if there's no, um, no indication of, of any in operation or anything else. Or as in this case, the Board of Health referral that came in at the end of September had no comment. So we leave it at that, but.
Isn't it also true, isn't it also true that when you apply for a special permit, everything's on the table, though?
Absolutely. And, and you know, and, and absolutely. And I, I understand that and I appreciate the workload. I, I'm not trying to be difficult. I'm just
No, no.
Saying that maybe there's a way that this information can get to the applicant so they can help this process along. Because I'm sure the board doesn't really want to have to continue these hearings either, right?
And we're also trying very hard to keep things from slipping through the cracks so we can be more streamlined in the future.
I understand. Yeah, thank you for that.
Well, I'm ready to just make up a simple motion. We continue this to pre-December right here in Zoom Hall. And hopefully we'll get the answer to this one question and be able to move forward and
I can.
There you go.
Very good. All right. So this hearing motion is continued to December third. Made by Ken, seconded by Ed. Roll call vote, Ken.
Uh, Ken Forman, I.
Ed Bankier and I.
Scott.
Scott Sluski.
Bob.
Robert Dugan, I.
And T J Hury, I. Attorney Moynihan, thank you to you and your team and Mr. Colman.
Thank you very much, and thank you all for all your work. Stay healthy and have a nice Thanksgiving.
Thank you. You too, Attorney Moynihan.
Take care.
All right. So that does it for our hearings list. Onto our open meeting items, voting the minutes from November fifth, twenty twenty.
Which we are tabling.
We are tabling, okay. Uh, board discussion, management of abutter participation for Zoom hearings. Wasn't much of it tonight. I'll, I'll say that.
You blame them?
I don't know. You know, we got the owner of the one parcel up, right?
We did. That was good. And I have a few phone calls to make. I got a few contacts of other heads of boards and I have carved time out tomorrow to make those phone calls. So I promise you all, I will make those phone calls tomorrow and follow up with Noreen about my discussions with the various various people I talked to from the other town boards.
You got something that just came up?
I did, yeah. Uh, Julie Kellner, yes, there were discussions about why abutters cannot participate regarding the other item that was withdrawn.
So they may be asking about when you withdraw an application, why the abutters are not participating.
Right, okay. So that item was withdrawn without prejudice. So the public hearing was never opened. They asked to withdraw. I suppose since it was without prejudice, they could always refile. Uh, I don't know the exact reason, since we did not open up public hearing. I don't know the exact reason of why it was withdrawn. Uh, but that's where that stands. Noreen, I don't know if you have anything.
Sure. I think, you know, while I understand that the abutters are interested, we did mail out notices. We did have a lot um, public input on this particular request. And uh, I understand that a lot of the neighbors are very interested slash um, not in support of the proposal, which was essentially the basis for the withdrawal. In conversation that I had with one of the neighbors, I did explain that it's difficult, given the board's time commitments with other projects, to open and discuss a project for which you will not be voting. So I did assure the person that I spoke with today that when the request is a withdrawal without prejudice, that it's possible that the application will be resubmitted and that indeed we will save the file and all the comments that we've received to date. But then again, because you're not voting, because the withdrawal has been requested prior to the meeting being opened, that it would just could take up a lot of the board's time to hear the neighbors and there would be no resolution.
Right. And not only that, Noreen, if someone were to resubmit to the board, that would trigger under the open meeting law, every, abutters would be re-noticed of the public hearing.
That's correct. So we will mail a notice to all the abutters that this was withdrawn so that they're able to track the progress and that should it be refiled, we will re-notice everyone.
Very good.
Oh, T J, I'm sure we're all seeing this, watching the chat. The concern is if it comes back or if it had not been with why could the abutters not participate by more than just quoting here, just typing in
chat functions.
Right. I'm reading it too. Okay.
And I guess, I guess the, you know, we've talked about this before, but whether there might be a designated representative who could be vetted somehow ahead of time to, to make a statement.
We actually did receive a presentation by one of the abutters and it was submitted to us in advance and had that meeting gone forward, we would have played that presentation for everyone to view. So for any abutters, you know, I do understand that typing into the chat is not optimal. So what we're currently offering is that people can send us letters ahead, PowerPoints, videos, any sort of information, but the town council has opined that it's necessary for us to get this information ahead and load it in and play it because opening up the participation to anyone has led to major problems in other communities. And so town council here has opted to be very conservative and make sure that nothing winds up on the screen that's not pre-vetted.
But that said, Noreen, a- after such testimony has been submitted and if there's a presentation by the applicant, there's still the opportunity for people to comment via the chat. So it's not, so they could both have a presentation and comment via the chat.
Mary.
Yeah, I had the pleasure of attending a open meeting session that was training session put on by the state. And I specifically asked the question about participation at the open meeting law. And the presenters on two separate occasions addressed it. And they said it's not part of the open meeting law. They said it is up to the chairman of the public body to make the determination. And they said that they fully support public participation, particularly on, on cases, and they weren't specific to us, where public traditionally has a lot to say. And so they said that there are places in the state where what they do is they allow them into the Zoom, the public, and that they can be cut off and muted if they say anything inappropriate, just as anybody else could be. And they're vetted and, and brought up the same way.
Is it possible to put a delay on a Zoom?
Well, I just don't think you need to. You just mute somebody if they say something that's inappropriate. We used to do it on TV all the time, remember?
I think it's a question for Thomas.
I think, I think town council has expressed that there have been issues specifically with sharing of screens and that it's not just an expression that someone may use or not, but that there have been inappropriate items shared on screens. And I think that's specifically what they are trying to guard against.
So why can't they give verbal testimony without being on screen?
I'm sorry.
Sorry, Mary.
No, go ahead, Scott.
Um, why couldn't they give verbal testimony so nobody could do that screen blow up, whatever everybody's talking about? I mean, these meetings are fluid and there are rebuttals that have to take place during these meetings. And, and, and being on both sides of, of, of that table, it's very frustrating to try to participate in something when there, you're out of rhythm with it. And, and I can see their frustration a- and, and with their lack of participation. So if they could give verbal testimony on a blank screen with just their name, then they would be part of the action as it was taking place, in my opinion. I know we talk about this every week and we get town council this, town council that. It doesn't satisfy the public's need to want to participate in this.
You know, the other situation is too, when you have to type in comments to these meetings, you cannot pay attention to what else is going on in the meeting.
No.
So by the time you type in your comments, they've already moved three steps down. And then the chairman has to go back and then read all the comments from previous statements and then you have to keep opening it and we would never be able to close a meeting. You know, you're not dealing with just everyone calling in. You're dealing, in most cases, with direct abutters. We have their names. We have their addresses. It, it's not a situation where people are just chiming in to, to see what's going on in the town.
I agree. I think, I agree with Robert. If, if we, if we, if they're on the abutter list, why do they have lower standing than the applicant? I, you know, it doesn't make any sense to me.
Mary, I cut you off. I'm sorry.
Oh, James wants to be elevated as Zoom crash.
I think James got, got cut off.
He's coming back.
Yeah, he, he got crashed.
Crashed, sorry. You know, this is also a bit of a question for Thomas because, you know, he's the technical guy. I mean, I think we have, we probably have frankly more control over Zoom than we do in a live meeting over what people do when they stand up and talk at the podium.
I mean, we've had to have people take it out of meetings. He just hit the switch.
I don't have a gavel.
Yeah, that's the only thing. Well, you could get one.
Amazon wishlist.
A gavel icon that you could, Zoom will soon have.
Probably is. Mary, this, um, this training session that you went to, it was recent and it was specifically geared toward these, these Zoom public hearings?
Yes, that was one of the main things that people wanted to hear about was with the Open Meeting Act and, and how do you do what, what we used to do more like it, like what we used to do now under Zoom and what were the differences in the requirements? This whole thing that we're talking about is not, they were very clear. It doesn't show up under the Open Meeting Law Act. But they were very specific that what it is, is the, the responsibility and the authority is, is in the chairman of the public body to make that call.
And, and who, was this the AG's office? Who, who gave the presentation? It was. All right.
Yeah, absolutely.
Terry, I've been to meetings in Rochester and Carver where they have the whole board is there and they have selected representatives for their hearings and then the rest of the participation comes in from Zoom on a speaker.
Yes.
I've been.
Oh, in person?
Absolutely. I've stood in on them as a representative in another town. And then when they have a butter participation, sometimes even engineers and subject matter experts, they come on a screen and you've got the whole board there present and the direct applicants are in the room at the same time practicing social distancing.
Sounds like court these days. All right.
Well, I guess the question is, should we as a, a board just decide to do it that way? I think we should.
All right. Well, if you allow me to follow up with a couple of other chair people in town and Mary, I, I may may chat with you about more information from that session that you attended. Maybe we can come to a decision next meeting about this. And whatever information I'll get, I gather, I will definitely forward to Noreen and ask that it be distributed to everyone before next meeting.
Yeah, before, I would hope before, so that next meeting we can operate that way. Because I, I think it's it's gone on long enough. It's time for us to hear the public.
Well, I'd, I'd love to meet back in person again, but I don't know if that's going to happen anytime soon. It, it is a short walk to my bed from here, but. All right. Uh, let's see. Anything else about this? All right, board updates. Future agenda items. All right. Seeing none. Our next meeting is here on Zoom Virtual Town Hall, December third.
Oh, before that, we have executive session.
Oh, that's right. We have, oh, I forgot. Well, I didn't forget about that, but uh, the executive session, we have two on Monday.
Twenty-third and twenty-fourth.
Right. So the expectation for Monday with the selectmen, is that a full board with the select board or is that a couple of representatives with the select board in executive session?
I think it is just the members that are voting slash participating on the specific address under review.
Right, okay. So it'll be whoever's, the, the ones who have been involved.
Yes.
A, a joint executive session, I guess you could say.
Correct.
If there is such a thing. All right. So we have that. And then we have the executive session on Tuesday night regarding the other matter.
Correct.
All right.
And that will also involve just the members that are voting on that particular case.
Understood. And you sent out the email that as not to confuse the two, you will be sending out the Zoom invites for the second executive session later.
Correct. So the invitation for Monday will probably go out tomorrow. And then so that there's not confusion, the invitation for Tuesday will go out Tuesday morning.
Everyone got that?
So help me God.
And that will be run the same way, right? We log into one and then have to log out and then log into the next.
So for the first one on Monday where you are a guest, we will not be opening a, a public hearing separately for the zoning board. We will go directly into the invited meeting. For Tuesday, we will be opening as a usual meeting in Zoom and then we'll go into executive session and we won't be back to open meeting.
All right.
Ready to adjourn to the conference table?
See you there, Ken.
You got eleven minutes, and then you gotta leave.
I ordered my drink ahead of time.
Yeah, yeah, get it to go.
These things are all possible these days. All right. These things are all possible these days. All right. Our two executive sessions, but our next, uh, public hearing is December 3rd. See everyone then. Meeting adjourned.
Thank you.
Guys.
Happy Thanksgiving.
Good Thanksgiving.